Business meeting for Monday, April the 11th. Mr. Levy.
Yes.
Would you please enter motion for closed session?
Okay, yes, I'm sorry. I hereby move that the board enter closed session to prevent disclosure of confidential, personal and student information pursuant to GS 143-318, 11A1, A5, A6, GS 115C-319, GS 115C-402, and 20USC 1232G, and to consult with the board attorney to preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to GS 143-318.11A3, including a discussion of Pratt and Moore versus Caldwell, Carter and Dennison, 21CVS 1492, and Williamson Saunders versus Moore County Board of Education, 21CVS 1681.
I second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We will recess at this time. For closed session.[427.37]
I've got our board members. Hey, everyone is here. Good evening. Is there a motion to approve agenda?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Next, we have pledge of allegiance by Yaze Capps, fifth grade student at McDeeds Creek.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have our inspiration this evening by Abigail Shoup, a fourth grade student at McDeeds Elementary School.
Hi, my name is Abigail Shoup. I'm 10 years old and a fourth grader at McDeeds Creek Elementary. I am so happy to have the chance to speak here today. I was asked to talk about inspiration. And when I think about what inspires me, I think about the quote by former NFL football player Jerry Rice. This is something my grandpa used to say to my mom, and now she says it to me. Do what others won't, so later you can do what they can't. But what does this quote mean to me? To me, it means intentional practice, going above and beyond expectations, and time management. When you intentionally practice, you don't just go through the motions, but you do it with all your might and you focus. When you go above and beyond expectations, you push yourself to be the best you can be. It's not about the competition with someone else, but the one with yourself. What about time management? Time is the most important thing we have because how we spend our time determines how we live our life. Spending our time wisely is so important. My take on doing what others won't, so later you can do what they can't, is to practice with focus and intention. Push yourself to be the best you can be and spend your time wisely. You may have a different take on this, but whatever this quote means to you, I hope, "Do what others won't, so later you can do what they can't," inspires you as much as it does me. Thank you for your time and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you so much to both of our students this afternoon. Great job. Now we have our moment of silence by Vice Chair Libby Carter.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. I invite you to join with me here for a moment of silence. Perhaps we might reflect on the comments of Ms. Abigail because she certainly set the stage for us. Please join me. Thank you.
Thanks. And now we will have our recognitions for this evening by Mr. Hensley.
I just learned I was doing this, so I'll be learning all the great things these people did, as you all will be. So if Mr. Glidewell, Alex Glidewell, join Chair Thompson and Vice Chair Carter at the front, please. Alex Glidewell, Robbins Elementary, from Robbins Elementary School, is this month's Engage, Inspire, and Succeed Certified Staff Honoree. Mr. Glidewell joined Robbins Elementary two years ago, and he immediately became a perfect fit. He impresses everyone with his outstanding character, commitment to teaching and learning, and his desire to continue to grow professionally. Mr. Glidewell is a role model to both students and staff. He is well-liked and respected by his peers in his ability to connect with students. Mr. Glidewell gets students excited about music and teaches the impact it can have on their lives. He guides students in making global and cultural connections and truly allows them to view the world from other people's perspectives. Watching him teach is like watching an artist. He paints a picture that engages his students and enhances their understanding and appreciation of music. We thank Mr. Glidewell for all he does for Robbins Elementary. And if members of the Glidewell family and Principal Lirita stand to be recognized and congratulations. If Jane Scruggs could join Chair Thompson and Vice Chair Carter at the front, please. Jane Scruggs, Pinehurst Elementary School, is this month's Engage, Inspire, and Succeed Support Staff Honoree. Ms. Scruggs serves as a bookkeeper at Pinehurst Elementary School. Prior to becoming the bookkeeper in 2015, Jane served as an instructional assistant for a decade. Ms. Scruggs is an extremely hard-working individual. Her dedication is shown through her willingness to support all staff and help wherever needed, whether it's at the carpool, lying the front desk, or covering the playground. She's a problem solver and works through some of the school's most challenging situations. Ms. Scruggs always ensures everything runs smoothly as possible, making sure things are fair for everyone, having all the answers or finding them, and is always willing to all the answers, that's a high standard, by the way. That's a high standard, and is always willing to offer a helping hand. She does everything with a smile on her face and is always positive even during the most challenging of times, which never occur, right?
Right.
The icing on the cake is she is a great listener and a friend to all, adults and children alike. Would member of the Scruggs family and Principal Secconi please stand to be recognized? Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
If Brian Loza Gomez, please join Chair Thompson and Vice Chair Carter at the front. Brian Loza Gomez, Northmore High School, is this month's Engage, Inspire, and Succeed Student Honoree. Brian is an exemplary student, maintaining a high GPA while being active in extracurricular sports and clubs. During his senior year, Brian served as team captain for both the men's soccer and football team. That's a big deal. He has currently enrolled in the FIRE Academy through Sand Hills Community College and serves an average of 15 hours per week as a volunteer firefighter in the Robbins community. Brian will have earned over 25 credit hours at Sand Hills by the time he graduates, including coursework to earn Nurse Aid One certification. He plans to pursue a career in the medical field and will be attending UNC at Charlotte in the fall as a Levine or Levin Scholar on full scholarship. Mustang Country, which we all know is Northmore, right, is so proud of Brian. We wish him the best in his future endeavors. Would the members of the Loza, I'm sorry, Loza Gomez family and Principal Purvis please stand to be recognized? And this concludes this month's Engage, Inspire, and Succeed recognitions. Thank you.
Awesome, awesome. Before we get into our program highlights, I would like to take this opportunity to recognize one of our awesome commissioners, Ms. Katherine Graham. If you would stand, please, and just acknowledge being here. Katherine and I go back, way back, to trustees, so we're so glad to have you here this evening, Katherine. Next, we have our program highlights, Dr. Locklear.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, this evening we have a program highlight from our school nurse program. And we're certainly pleased to highlight the work of our school nurses, the incredible work of our school nurses. And certainly, over the last two years, it's just been heroic like many other members of our staff. Ms. Dedman is here, interim director for Student Support Services, to kick that off, along with Ms. Lisa Kaiser, our school health program manager, and also Ms. Jana Shype Uherka, which I think I probably mispronounced, but I apologize, Jana, who's been our lead COVID nurse. And we're just so fortunate to have all these folks on our team, so listen to them.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Locklear, board members. Tonight I have the pleasure of introducing the leaders of our school nursing program. Lisa Kaiser, School Health Manager, and, I think I'm going to get it right, I've been practicing, Jana Shype Uherka, Lead COVID Nurse. Did I do it? All right, great. They're here to tell you a little bit about the school nursing, excuse me, program in the Moore County schools.
Thank you, Ms. Dedman. Good evening, everyone. I'm Lisa Kaiser. As Ms. Dedman said, I'm honored to be here tonight. Who are the school nurses? When people think about school, they usually think about students, principals, teachers. Most don't think about nurses. Some people don't even know that schools have nurses. But school nurses are very important. According to the CDC, healthy students are better learners, and academic achievement bears a lifetime of benefits for health. Also, evidence-based, effectively coordinated, and strategically planned school health programs and services are necessary for the academic achievement gap. I mean, can you focus if you're feeling ill or if you're in pain? Who are the MCS school nurses? Moore County school nurses are the dedicated, educated, compassionate servants that you see here in our audience. There are RNs with a Bachelor of Science in Nursing degree. They have received national certification as a school nurse, or they're working towards it because it must be completed within three years of hire according to state law. In addition to these nurses, we've hired a lead COVID nurse, as Ms. Dedman said, Jana, and we have a COVID nurse team this year. How many school nurses do we need? NASN, who's a National Association for School Nurses, they work collaboratively with the National Board for Certification of School Nurses. They recommend one school nurse, full-time RN, in every school, every day. In Moore County, we have six nurses that cover two schools, and we have one nurse that covers three schools. Here you can see how many hours of overtime our school nurses have worked this year, even with having COVID nurses. So you may ask, what do the school nurses do? There's a list. Each of these bullets requires extensive documentation, which means they spend a lot of time on the computer, they spend a lot of time on the phone. Imagine schools where there is no nursing coverage. As I said, there are six schools that have a nurse that has to split the two schools, and there's one school that and there's one school that a nurse has to go between three schools. Well, it's the UAP, which is the Unlicensed Assisted Personnel. They cover for them. Usually, this person is an attendance officer, a bookkeeper, a receptionist, it could be a teacher, a TA, or a registrar. They're fully responsible for students with both chronic and emergent health issues when the nurse isn't there. Think about if you're that person, you're without a medical background, and you're responsible for caring for a diabetic that's in crisis, a student that's having a seizure, someone that's passed out, someone having an asthma attack and can't breathe, or someone that's having an allergic reaction. Sorry, that gets me a little bit heated when I think about those things. I do feel sorry for the people covering. Understanding the School Nurse Role: Immunizations and Health Assessment Review. The state requires healthcare assessments on every new student to North Carolina schools. Each physical presented requires close individual scrutiny and potential healthcare plans to be developed. As you can see, it's so far this year, there have been over two thousand healthcare plans that have been developed. There's also new and time-sensitive immunization requirements for each student that enters kindergarten, seventh grade, and twelfth grade. They require close review. So far, for an example, there have been over two hundred and ninety-two new students and five hundred and twenty-two seniors, and that's at Pinecrest High School alone this year. Think of the stacks of paperwork that that nurse has that require close examination while doing all of the other things required at this school. Medications that are brought into the school by parents provide time to discuss the student's health issues with the nurse. It can prompt a healthcare plan to be created if they don't have one already. However, if a nurse isn't at the school, then it's taken by the UAP, as we discussed, and then the nurse checks on that when she gets to that school. These medication orders are then entered into the student's electronic health record. The same goes with teaching. Nurses with multiple schools need to teach at each school, and they need to document what's done. Also, it's not just student health injuries and illnesses. Staff get injured and sick, too, and they go to the nurse for care. Illness and Injury Chart. In actuality, it's a small part of the nurse's job, but often, it's the only thing that most staff see nurses doing, because many health offices have a non-stop steady stream of students that present for treatments. So, in between seeing these students, nurses are busy. They're busy documenting the visit, taking phone calls from parents, they're reviewing and documenting vision and hearing screenings, they're doing IEP evaluations, they're reviewing immunizations and the health assessments, they're creating the healthcare plans, they're updating the COVID tractors, which at some points were a full-time job in themselves, as you remember. They were completing medication forms, earning state-mandated continuing education credits, preparing for CPR classes that they teach, responding to emails, reviewing health updates, and arranging assistance for kids in crisis. How has COVID affected the nursing practice? Well, when COVID first hit in March of 2020, the school nurses' work didn't slow down. They went to the health department with contact tracing, they helped distribute school lunches, they made home deliveries for medications and supplies, they called the homes of students with special needs, and since that time, school nurses have continued to work. They've worked all day, they've worked late evenings, they've worked weekends, and they've worked holidays to keep up with phone demands, particularly during the peak COVID seasons. Important health promotions such as vision and dental screenings sadly fell to the wayside. In addition to all the work they'd been overwhelmed with to begin with, it was almost impossible to keep up with the explosion of phone calls and constantly changing protocols as COVID evolved and we learned more about the disease process. This was especially evident during the COVID spikes. Each one of these nurses stood the test of dignity, patience, composure, and professionalism as they dealt with frustrated parents while navigating all the frequent and sometimes inconsistent guidance changes of COVID-19. Communication by School Nurses. Prior to COVID, nurses documented over six thousand communication efforts with parents per year, and as you can see on the graph, during COVID, the volume of communications has doubled, more than doubled. Dr. Powers and Katherine Nagy were instrumental from the onset in putting out COVID information through phone messages and on the school website, and as we hired the COVID team between October and December of this year, Jana gradually took over that website information, and then she headed up the COVID testing program. Through the implementation of this testing program, we prevented students and parents from sitting in long lines at doctors' offices. We facilitated timely test results. We supported the school attendance of healthy students and staff. Currently, these COVID nurses are helping the school nurses catch up by assisting them with things such as vision screenings, healthcare plans, and scanning medical documents. Where's the school nurse program headed, you may ask? The lead COVID nurse, Jana, has been a facilitator between the school and the health department. However, COVID is only one of numerous communicable diseases that the state requires to be reported to the local health department. We are hopeful that there will be a continuation of grant funding to support growth of the school health program as the pandemic becomes more endemic. School nurses are a vital part of this school community. We have reviewed why the national recommendation is to have a nurse in every building. We've also discussed the CDC's stance that research has shown a strong connection between healthy behavior and academic achievement, and the significant impact health has on learning. The health of the Moore County students is worth the investments. Thank you, Moore County School Nurses. You are loved, and I appreciate each one of you.
If you'll stand up, please, the school.
Thank you, Ms. Dedman. I was going to suggest that. Appreciate that presentation.
We appreciate all of you. At this time, before we get into our next agenda item, I want to take just a couple of minutes in case there is anyone from either the recognitions or the program highlights that care to exit our meeting at this time.
I get one, one what?
He needed a piece of paper.
Oh.
Okay, next, we have our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next, we will have our public address, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We now will move to public address of the board, just as a reminder that per board policy, each speaker is entitled to three minutes, and we ask that you please pay attention to the clock, which will be on the screen, such that you will know that as the time is elapsing. We also ask that you refrain from comments about specific members of the, or personnel members from the Moore County Schools, and I'm going to go ahead and call out the names of the first five speakers and ask that you come over to the, to the wall here and be ready to speak. Our first five are Paula Gross, Pauline Bruno, Robin Cowcut, Lowell Simon, and Rowley Sampson.
Ms. Carter, how many, how many people do we have signed up for the public comment?
Just six.
Six, okay.
Plus one online.
Got it, thank you. Prepare myself.
Ms. Gross.
I'm Paula Gross. I'd like you to have a movement that if you have less than ten or less than twenty speakers, that you give us five minutes instead of three. I think that's reasonable. At the last board meeting, you Libby made some statements regarding the book George that I'd like to address. You said you would be happy to share a copy of the book if anyone would like to read it. It is, and your quote is, "It is material well worth reading, and you should read it for yourself before you form that opinion," end quote. You also said you were, quote, "pleased to hear from other citizens who have faced the same kind of issues that the youngster in George actually faced," end quote. Is this book autobiographical, or is it fictional? You're treating it as some type of truth statement, which gives it credibility that it may not deserve. You also said you are, quote, "sorry that so much time and energy had to be expended by so many people to bring us to this point," end quote. You didn't seem to have any problem with all the time and energy it took so many people to keep our children masked when it fit your political agenda, just saying. And that you're, quote, "glad to know that we can still consider that we are an inclusive society and that no matter what your sexual orientation, what your sexual preference might be, that you can feel that you are welcome within our school and that you will not be judged by the people you attend school with," end quote. Is it just me, or is this a totally inappropriate subject to even have to be discussed in a board meeting? Especially when you feel entitled to suggest reading material that many of us consider pornographic in nature and a way to sexually groom our children into accepting alternate lifestyles as completely normal and acceptable. These are subjects that should be addressed by the parents and the parents alone, at a time the parent considers appropriate for their children. No one, myself included, wants any child to be uncomfortable at school regardless of any issue, whether race, gender, religion, or any other factor, but you obviously feel that it is your right to interfere with and ignore parents' rights and feelings and to promote your opinion on what is a correct social and moral stance for our children to adopt. Further, undeniable proof that the school's main focus is not to educate, but to indoctrinate our children. In addition to becoming improperly involved with sex and gender issues, your willingness to adopt and administer the social-emotional surveys to students prove you are promoting discrimination and division instead of eliminating it. You Libby felt entitled to make a reading suggestion to the rest of us, so I assume you'll give me the same courtesy. I suggest you take a deep dive into the Bible, which is not, to the best of my knowledge, even allowed in the school libraries, but George is, and acquaint yourself with God's stance on some of the topics you're so free to express your opinion on. Anytime you want to research these topics biblically, I'm willing and available to look them up with you. That is a sincere offer. Mr. Libby, obviously, your suggestion that the meetings be held at some of the schools hasn't been adopted yet, but thank you for the suggestion. To be able to accommodate more parents and to actually feel their participation is encouraged by the board is probably not high on the board's priorities.
Thank you, Mrs. Gross.
You're welcome.
Ms. Bruno.
My name is Pauline Bruno, and I am a candidate for the Moore County Board of Education. Let's talk about the budget. The people of this county deserve it. Where is the detailed ledger count by object code? The state of North Carolina has put into law that each school district must turn over a line-by-line budget to the public. This should be available to everyone online. Tell us, what is the state paying for? We don't know. What is the federal government paying for? We don't know. What, what are the schools receiving locally from the commissioners? Where is the ledger? Moore County School is asking for seven million dollars in the coming month. At the end of June 30th, 2020, Moore County Schools had a net, net change in fund balances of plus one million, one hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred and thirty-six. The fund balances at the beginning of the school year 2020 was two million, four hundred and forty-three dollars, three hundred and ten dollars. I said that wrong. Two million, four hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and ten, totaling an end-of-year three million, four hundred and eighty-six thousand, thirty dollars. This three million dollars was carried over to 2021 with a net change in fund balances of two million, seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars. This added up to the end-of-year June 30th, 2021, to six million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, forty-three dollars. Why are you asking for seven million taxpayer money when you have had two years of surplus for the last two years? I really think you need to answer to the hard-working citizens of this county. Everyone wants to give our students the best education possible. We all want that. However, I do believe we are misdirected in our goals. It makes me sick to hear that you spent two hundred and eighty thousand dollars on Panorama and that lost that money when you canceled it. I am happy that you are watching our money, but constantly asking the taxpayers to sacrifice is something else. It's time to be responsible and totally transparent. If your budget inflation is seven point nine percent, don't you think it's hitting the citizens of this county the same way? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cowcut.
Good evening, Chair Thompson, Dr. Locklear, and board members. My name is Robin Cowcut, and I'm also running as a candidate for the Board of Education, and I really appreciate the opportunity to share a message of support tonight. We want all children and youth to have the opportunity offered by our public schools to achieve the American dream, no matter where they live or their economic status. Moore County Schools has a history, which still holds true today, that the education we deliver enables our students to become literate citizens that can flourish and contribute to their families and communities. The Moore County School District and this community provided this opportunity for me, my family members, and thousands of students over the many years. We stand on a foundation of hard work, commitment, and generosity of all those that came before us. We should always remember the hard work and sacrifice that was given by citizens and school employees for our schools of today. My hope is that our board, our county commissioners, and our community will pledge to ensure that our children and young people continue to have these programs and opportunities in place to achieve their dreams. Our board has crafted a budget that reflects plans for continued progress in our schools. It is up to our citizens and the county commissioners to support these requests and to make sure that our schools can operate efficiently and competitively today and in the future. Each month, we witness the fulfillment of many dreams, like we did tonight, and goals as the board and the schools celebrate and recognize our employees', academic accomplishments of our students', athletics, too, special programs and initiatives, and community collaborations. I hope that we all recognize that there are many, many moments of success that happen each day in our classrooms, on the stage, the art galleries, the athletic fields, and in our communities. Thank you to all those that serve and have served in Moore County Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Simon.
I want to use my time tonight to address the deception being used by some board members and some members of the public about why they want certain books removed from school libraries. It's often difficult to tell when people are misinformed or simply uninformed. In this case, it's pretty clear that they're lying about the reasons they want these books removed. We've all heard the quotes from the book George that are being used to justify its removal. However, there's another book that I believe these same people would suggest more children read, even though it depicts much more graphic sex and violence. Either they haven't read it, or they're misleading us about the true reasons they want to remove such books. Time does not permit me to read more than a few passages from this book, so I'll have Time does not permit me to read more than a few passages from this book, so I'll have to leave some others for you. So the older daughter said to her younger sister, "Our father is old, and there are no men left to come and have sex with us. Let's get him drunk and have sex with him so we can have his children." And they made their father drink wine that night, and the older daughter went in and had sex with her father. And the next day, the older daughter said to her sister, "I had sex with her father last night. Let's get him drunk again tonight, and you can have sex with him so we can have his children." They got their father drunk that night also, and the younger daughter went in and had sex with him. So the two daughters got pregnant by their father. Judah told him, "Go to your brother's wife and marry her, and have kids with your brother." Kids for your brother, sorry. But he knew that it shouldn't be his semen, so he went to his brother's wife. He spilled his semen on the ground, and that displeased God, so God killed him. And they came to her in her bed of love and had lusty sex with her. When she continued whoring so openly and ran around naked, I couldn't look, just like I couldn't look at her sister. And then she increased her whoring and started thinking about her younger days, when she whored around in another country and had sex with her lovers there, whose penises were the size of a donkey's and who spilled as much semen as a horse. And then you started wishing for the sex from your youth when they handled your young breasts. The people of Samaria must pay because they rebelled against God. They will be killed by the sword. Their kids will be slashed into pieces, their pregnant women ripped open. The day of the Lord is coming, and it will be a cruel day. He will kill the arrogant people. Their babies will be cut to pieces right in front of them. Their houses will be looted, and their wives will be raped. While he's on his way home, some small boys came out of the city and jeered him, saying, "Get lost, you bald head." No offense. And he turned around, and when he saw them, he cursed them in the name of the Lord. And two shebeers, she-bears, came out of the woods and tore up 42 of the boys. A man vowed to God, "Let you, if I let you, if you let me," sorry, "if you let me kill my enemies, whatever comes out of my house to meet me when I return will be God's, and I will sacrifice it as a burnt offering." When he got home, his daughter came.
Thank you, Mr. Simon.
Can I finish the Bible first? It'll be real quick.
Our time is up, sir.
It's your Bible.
All right, our time is up. Thank you, Mr. Simon.
Thank you. You're missing a good one.
Ms. Sampson is up next, and then our last speaker is Mr. Lewis.
Hi, I'm Rowley Sampson. I'm also running for Board of Education. April is the month of the military child, a time when we should be reflecting on the sacrifices and contributions made by our youngest military family members. Approximately 27% of Moore County School students come from military families, and of those 35,000, or 3,500 students, 24 of them have lost a military parent. These are children whose lives have been shaped by war, yet 65% of them say they plan to serve compared to 13% of their civilian peers. Moore County Schools has the fifth-largest student population in North Carolina, and close to 20% of our staff have self-identified as military veterans, spouses, family members, and parents of service members, the majority of which have been part of Operation Iraqi Freedom and Operation Enduring Freedom. In other words, we are a school district well-versed in the devastating cost of war. So you can imagine our frustration and anger as military family members and educators to hear prominent Moore County GOP leaders publicly, and I quote, "Declare war on leftist educators and their enablers in local and state government." What is even more disturbing to see, our local Board of Education candidates and sitting board members openly support the rhetoric and treat staff and teachers as enemy combatants. The Oxford Dictionary defines war as "a state of armed conflict between different nations or states or different groups within a nation or state." Let me emphasize that part, armed conflict, which implies physical casualties. Think about that. We have Board of Education members, community leaders, and our neighbors who have decided we are enemy combatants and leftist educators just because we work in public education. As a veteran, a military spouse, a military child, I take great offense that anyone would suggest that our staff, especially our military staff, is somehow less patriotic, less American because of political affiliations. Especially board members who have never taken the time to speak with us or walk in our shoes. Right now, the only Board of Education member who understands the challenges this generation of military service members and their families have faced is Ms. Caldwell. My husband and I are both from military, multi-generational military families. We have a long line of service, all the way from Operation Iraqi, Operation Iraqi Freedom and Operation Enduring Freedom to the American Revolution. From a long age, we learned the importance of defending and protecting the Constitution of the United States. Patriotism is not defined by allegiance to a political party, but a willingness to serve the good of all Americans. Military service members and their families are part of the 1%. We are willing to bear the cost of war. We are the descendants of Sparta. But know this, if you choose a war with us, you will get one. We will not go quietly in the night. We will stay and fight, so choose wisely.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis.
In just over a year, David Hensley has accomplished nothing but chaos and unleashed some of the most unstrung characters in our community. He discredited the law firm representing our schools, and the firm deservedly gave us the middle finger after 17 years of service. He was behind an illegal action to overturn the legal sale of land from an indigenous African-American cultural center. He discredits the county commissioners and the voters who overwhelmingly supported the bond referendum to build schools. He encourages, and back to the future now. He encourages a returning county commissioner who allowed the schools to deteriorate beyond repair because he refused to allocate state-madded county funds for capital expenses. He is behind efforts to ban books that have long been part of school libraries. He has discredited the Public Health Department for following CDC rules. What's next? He encourages candidates with no apical experience for a racially, sexually, and economically diverse student population. He wants a military fossil from the pre-digital age, a homeschooler with no public school contact, a clueless nothing, and a woman who, in my opinion, is either a January 6 dupe or a traitor, but is certainly an ass wholly. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Eklund, we have one caller. Is this Jackie Sharp Brown?
Yes, it is.
Yes, you're alive with the Moore County School Board. You have three minutes to speak, please.
Thank you. Madam Chair and board members, I am speaking tonight in support of the superintendent's recommended budget as discussed at last week's Board of Education work session. The goals of this budget, hire new teachers for grades four and five, fund a new counselor for Cranes Creek, and fully fund the Connect Virtual Academy as a standalone school, are worthy ones. I would like to thank the budget team for all their hard work in preparing this proposed budget. I would also like to thank the Board of Education members who serve on our budget committee. This budget is truly one of the best, most beneficial budgets we have ever seen proposed for Moore County Schools. I ask that this board take this proposed budget to the Moore County Board of Commissioners and request it be fully funded. As Mr. Levy stated in the work session, you will need to be tough with our commissioners, but I believe if you present a strong and unified front, the commissioners will have no choice but to seriously consider your request. I will stand behind you, and I believe the majority of this community will stand behind you as well. I also wanted to... The budget is a mystery, and we don't know where to find it. Moore County Schools are audited frequently, and those audits, the audit results are public. The Board of Education also conducted a review of the budget at Mr. Hensley's request and found no waste. And that's the end of my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Chair, that concludes public address for the evening.
Thank you. Board members, are you...
Madam Chair, if there's a lady in the back.
I have no objection.
I have no objection.
I think we'd have to have full consensus to do that. Mr. Weber, it is, it is against policy.
Does anyone, does anyone object to, to this lady speaking? Do we need to take a motion, Mr. Weber?
We'd need to take a motion to waive your current policy for the specific circumstance. I believe that requires two-thirds vote.
Madam Chair, I think.
Can we move on, or do you need a break? Okay, so our next item is our Board of Education proposed preliminary 22, 23 budget. Dr. Locklear.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, as Mr. Cox comes to the podium. Tonight, Mr. Cox and I are bringing back to you your proposed budget for your adoption this evening. I've asked Mr. Cox if he would review a few pieces of that. There have been no changes from what was presented to you last week. This budget represents, as we know, an investment in what I think we would, we would all agree is our county's greatest asset, which is our education system. You know, when we think about that investment and that request that the board will be making to our local county commissioners, we're talking about an investment in our students and our staff. We're talking about, as Mr. Cox has and we have in our presentation, you're talking about approximately, we serve approximately 1,200, 12,800 students. And along with our charter school partners, they serve another over 1,300 public school students. They're not part of our school district, but certainly are charter school partners. So you're talking about 14,000 students. They're 80% of our school-age population that have investment goes to support them. And so this budget, that's about an increased request of about $7.7 million. It includes a base budget to support fixed cost impact, to continue the services that we have been doing to support our students and staff and our community and integrate those services. It also includes those, those priorities that the board reached some consensus on around lowering class sizes in grades four and five, providing additional counselor at Cranes Creek, supporting Connect Academy as a standalone school, and decompressing the classified salary schedule. So it includes those priorities that the board had given us feedback on. And so with that, I'm going to turn over to Mr. Cox and let him walk through and, and give an overview of that, that request again, and, and breaking out that budget, and then I'll quickly sum it up. Mr. Cox.
Thank you, Dr. Locklear, Madam Chair, members of the board. Charlie, if you'll pull up the PowerPoint, please. All right, as Dr. Locklear alluded to, or he talked, he introduced the, those previous slides we talked.
Excuse me, Mr. Cox. Mr. Bachelor, could you increase the font on that so that everyone could see it just a bit better? Thank you, sir.
No problem, no problem. Understand. So what I want to do is just kind of remind the board of what's all included in the budget. As Dr. Locklear alluded to, we've got base budget items. The first item you see there is the certified staff, the local supplement. That is to maintain an 8% local supplement paid to all our certified staff. The next item is administrative staff salary increase that matches the state increase anticipated for administrative staff, locally-paid administrative staff. The next item is the local certified salary pay increase. Those certified, the certified teachers and so on, they are scheduled to receive a 2.5% salary increase. This will match those, the locally-paid employees will be able to match the state increase for that item. We've got the 2.5% for our classified staff, or $15 per hour, whichever is higher. And the next item covers that, including matching benefits. We also have, we're required by law to pay the charter school a per pupil percent, or per pupil amount based on our county funding. That item covers the charter school flow-through increase that we have to send to the charter schools. We've included utility rate increases for inflation based on conversations with our power and utility companies of covered inflationary costs for supplies and materials that are covered locally. And then we've also covering, the next item is prior year fixed cost, not covered by recurring revenue. We've got reduced class sizes that Dr. Locklear mentioned, two in grades four and five. Establishing the Connect Academy as a standalone school. The counselor that he mentioned, as well as decompressing the classified salary scale. Also on there are inflationary increases for our capital outlay and our digital learning fund that's held at the county, which does total that $7,689,500 new request if you approve the budget. Can you zoom back down, Charlie? Thanks. And this is just a summary of the total budget request, which would be $39,539,500. You see the increase that we just went over to $7,689,500, which equates to approximately $2,700 per pupil. And that $39 million does include both the capital and digital outlay funds. This slide here lays out the breakdown of that funding, which $34,300 would go to Moore County Schools for Moore County Schools' expenses. $3.6 million would flow through Moore County Schools to the charter schools. $790,000 would be a capital outlay fund, and $790,000 would be a digital learning fund, which is held at the county. That totals that $39,539,500 expense. And this, this slide here breaks down our specific fund, too, which is what we consider our local fund. We've got a couple additional items outside of the money that the county gives us. You see that first local expense, MCS, the Moore County Schools, the $34 million that I just covered, the $3 million for charter schools. We also receive fines and forfeitures through the judicial system and then interest earned on monies that we have. So a total local budget would be $38,439,500. And this gives you a breakdown of every fund that we have. Fund one, which is estate funds, $86 million, 86.4 million. Our local current expense, which you just saw, $38.4 million. Our federal fund, including our Essor dollars, $23 million. Capital expense, $790,000. School nutrition, $5.4 million. And our local operations fund at $3 million, which gives you a total budget of $157,125,750. And now I'll turn it back over to, to Dr. Locklear to summarize.
Again, as we've, we've noted in discussions before, this, this budget articulates an investment in, in, in our students and our staff and in continuing to have a great education system so we can also support and have a vibrant economy and a great community. But it, this budget that you, that you're looking at for your potential approval provides for a base budget to continue the services we're currently providing, as well as addressing your priorities to continue to support learning and teaching and impact and support our employees. And so the next steps we know with this budget, upon your approval, is our presentation to the Moore County Board of Commissioners on the 19th, and to continue to work with our commissioners and with our county manager to continue to work through that presentation, provide information they may, may want. Right now, the county manager is planning to share his recommended budget to the Board of Commissioners on the 17th of May. Public hearing is scheduled for June 21st, with a tentative vote by our commissioners to adopt the county budget on the 23rd. So Andrew and I are certainly available to respond to any questions or any additional discussion you may have.
Board members, any questions or comments? Mr. Levy?
Yes, Dr. Locklear, and, and maybe it's Mr. Cox. I noted an interview with, with Commissioner Prisano, and he had a lot of questions. And, and I had asked that you guys listen to his interview because I thought that we had answers for his questions. Have you guys listened to that interview?
Yes, sir. I believe we both have. Yes, sir.
Okay. Have we provided the county commissioners with an ESR spreadsheet?
I've, the plan would be, once the board adopts their budget, then I would work with county manager Vess to discuss with him the materials and backup information that he would desire to have as part of what he shares with his board. We also have shared in prior presentations to this board, an update on where we were with our ESR spending. I think we had year-to-date in the December presentation that we made. And we're more than happy to put together more detailed information to provide to Mr. Vess and our commissioners, whatever they need to see around how this board voted to spend ESR funds and how we're spending them at this point, where we are with spending those funds and the requirements that are attached to how you spend those funds.
Well, I want to say, first of all, I support the budget, okay? Because I think it's a good budget. I think it's very, very important that we have class sizes in grades four and five, which are equal to our class sizes in grades one, two, and three. Because in grade three, all of a sudden, we step up to a huge class comparatively, okay? And we have what are called reading retained students going into grades four. And we definitely need, in grade four, those students who did not quite make it in grade three, which is a critical time for reading, okay? We need to have those lower class sizes so our teachers can concentrate on this. And I also think that our money for our classified employees is long overdue, extremely important. And I also want to congratulate the superintendent for also making sure that our bus drivers, I want the public to know, that our bus drivers will be reimbursed for their physical, as well as their licenses for their renewals. But we have a credibility problem. And I think we have a credibility problem with the honorable people from the Board of Commissioners. It starts with an explanation for our fund ballots, and I think we've got a good explanation for that fund ballots, and as well as the need for more money. And until we answer Commissioner Prasono's questions, and I believe we have the answers to those questions, okay? We're going to meet with resistance from the community because every single dollar that we get for our students has to come from somebody's house. And these are older people who are on fixed incomes, whose property taxes have to pay for the schools. And just like I've been told, and I have to apologize in a certain way for saying we've got to be tough. I think we've got to be open with the commissioners because they will pour their hearts out. I know each and every one of them, they are good people. They will pour their hearts out for the children of Moore County and for Moore County schools. But we have to show them what we need the money for, and we have to answer their questions. Each and every question that Commissioner Prasono has, we have to meet. And so I just, and then one of the big things that he did ask for was an ESR spreadsheet. And I know that, you know, we can very easily explain what we did with the ESR funds. And I think it's important because we've got summer school coming up with reading challenged children and learning loss, and that's coming from ESR funds, things like that. But we've got to be a little bit more open, a little bit more transparent. And I hope we will, in a presentation to the county commissioners, we will present and answer each and every one of Commissioner Prasono's questions.
Thank you, Mr. Levy. Anybody, anyone else? Mr. Hensley.
I don't have any questions. I do have a couple of comments to show my support for this budget.
Okay.
So. So, well, first, let me start off by saying that I do support this budget. And I want to make this clear, you know, there's tons of rhetoric all across the political spectrum. But I don't care where anyone falls on the political spectrum. I have not talked to anyone ever who does not want properly funded schools. Let me say that again. Everyone I've ever met, regardless of where they fall, want properly funded public schools. There's no doubt about that. You know, obviously, it's our duty to spend it wisely in accordance with our goals. So let me say why I support this budget and why I think the public and the county commissioners are going to support it. In a large part, although I have some concerns, the increases that we're asking for, that are enumerated up here, are focused on what I think are important, you know? Paying our classified staff properly. And I'm extraordinarily proud of the work that this board has done, you know, back in January, I think, of last year. We approved the classified staff step increase. And by the way, there was a huge, huge, I don't want to use the word injustice, but there was a huge unfairness in pay. Because if I got this right, and I'm pretty sure I do, the state had a $15 minimum wage for all state employees unless they worked for the school system. And then, you know, we had school bus drivers, you know, we had classified staff people making $10 an hour and whatnot. So I'm proud that the General Assembly is, you know, getting rid of that disparity in pay. Unfortunately, we have to make up for it for our local pay. But anyway, you know, we are fixing that. We've implemented that, and we're catching up. And the other thing that this budget does is it strives for a smaller class size. I don't know anyone who's against hiring more teachers. So I think this is going to get broad support from both the public and, or I'm hopeful that it'll get broad support from the public and the county commissioners. Let me say this, too. You may ask, well, David, a 24% increase in local funding is a big ask. And that is a big ask, going from, what, $31 million and something to $39 million. But in addition to paying our people properly after a decade plus of not doing that and, you know, trying to reduce our class size through fewer teachers, I want to point out that over the last four years, four years, four budget cycles, the increase, the physical dollar increase to Moore County school has been 2.4% over four years. And going into that four years ago was a decrease. So if it was five years, it would have even been lower. That's a .6, almost half a percent of increase per year. It did not even keep up, I mean, forget inflation, it did not even keep up with the growth in enrollment. And, you know, Moore County schools, well, if it wasn't for ESR funds, Moore County schools would have been doing more for less. So that is, those are the three reasons why I support the budget. I do have a couple of things I want to point out, though. You know, I'm hopeful that we, although, I almost didn't approve this budget. But then, after thinking it through over the last week and thinking it through, very, thinking it through thoroughly, I support the budget, but we have left work, we have work left undone. And I would like to see this board fix some systemic problems. The first is a funding formula that we could agree upon with the county commissioners that we won't have to worry about this in the out years. You know, if we can agree on a funding formula that takes in account inflation and the external influences on our budget, such as inflation and legislation in Raleigh, where there's a base amount that's tied to the growth in enrollment and the growth in these external factors, then we will have solved a systemic problem. And we don't have to keep running back with discreet, you know, every year begging for more. We're in the middle of redoing our strategic plan. We have to, you know, we have to make sure that our expenditures are aligned with whatever this board decides. And the new superintendent, whoever that's going to be, decides our strategic goals. And then we need to make sure our funding is lightning focused on those strategic goals and what we decide is important, which hopefully is education. And we focus our funding on all of our resources, whether it's our human resources, capital, buildings or whatever, are focused on education. The, we owe it to the public to, if we're going to go to the Moore County taxpayers, which we all are, and we're going to ask for an increase, we do owe it to them to do a thorough budget scrub. And Ms. Carter, not to your point, you know, no one wants to reduce the number, oh, you only get four crayons this year. You know, I mean, we need to look at entire things and say, should we even be doing this? I don't know the answer to that. But we do owe it to the public if we're going to ask for a 25% increase, that we do look internally and make sure that everything's aligned with our goals. And then fourth, we do have this dependence on ESR funds, which in many cases are multi-year funds. And we just have to make sure that as those wind down, that we have a plan to shift our funding so that we don't have shortfalls in critical functions. But I support the budget. But those are four things that I think as a board we need to address in the coming year.
Okay, Mr. Dennison?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. First of all, I want to say I strongly disagree with Bob that we have a credibility problem with our commissioners. I don't think that's true at all. But I think we really need to get with the commissioners so they understand what we know about the budget. They need to understand that the state is actually responsible for all our operational expense. And you will see in our budget, for example, the state determines how many students we have to have for each teacher. And that's all, if they're all in the same building. So if they're spread out, you know, you can't match the specific number of students with the teacher if you have 13 different elementary schools. As an example, why, if they're funding us for, only classroom teachers only, if they are funding us for what we need, why do we have to have 85 classroom, depending on our commissioners, to pay for 85 classroom teachers that are not funded by the state? So the new Board of Commissioners need to understand what the state's responsible for. Commissioners are responsible for, statutorily responsible for maintenance and capital needs. They're not responsible for all this other stuff. But because the state's been falling behind so many years, we're doing this. So we have to work closely with the commissioners to go to those people in Raleigh. And I made many, many trips up there, many, many hours up there talking to them. And they listen, but they will not do anything. So we need to have a concerted effort to talk to the people that are making the decisions. And it's not everybody, it's only like 10 or 15 people up there that are making all the decisions. To make sure that we put enough pressure on them, we need to count on the community, everybody in the community, to send letters to them and let them know how they feel. I mean, they don't, they get emails, but it's always complaining about something that they're never asking for what we really need. So it's important we work with them because the more money we can, the more we can have the state pay for, the more money we will have available to do the other things we need to do, particularly for our economically disadvantaged students. When we have a middle school who is a low-performing school that has, I think it's 15 or 16 classes with 30 students in it and six classes with over 35 students in it, we should never have those class size problems in a school that's low performing. We need all the resources we can get to bring those students up to speed. Because that's where we're going to make a big difference in what's happening in Moore County schools. It's the lower economic group that's really holding us back. The rest of the students are doing fine, even with economically disadvantaged. For reading last year, all our students and our black students were well ahead of what the state averages are. And you need to understand, too, that the best performing school in North Carolina has a school, a district performance grade of 63. So I think everybody's saying about being on 100%. It would be nice, but it takes a lot, a lot of work, and it takes a lot more work when our teachers have to take kids who are coming to school that don't even know the ABCs to bring them up to speed so that they're able to graduate. And people are talking about high school students graduating can't read. That is not true. I guarantee you, no one can get through the 22 required courses that we have in high school to pass those beforehand. And I'm going to, I'm going to read you something here that, so you understand a little bit about what's happening with those courses. Our reading in high school is based on one course.
Mr. Dennison, may I ask you, is this related to our budget? Do you want to do that in your board comments?
I won't do it in board comments, but if you want me to be quiet, I will. But it does have a budget.
I just ask.
It does have to do with our budget because we should not have to be doing this. And the commissioners shouldn't have to be paying for it.
Okay, if you just get to your point.
I'm done, I'm done. But our reading in high school is based on English II, that's it. And if you look up what's taught in English school, English II, then you'll understand, you know, what the results are. Thank you. I'll get off my soapbox, let her rip.
Are you sure, Mr. Dennison? You're good?
I am.
Okay.
For the present time.
Anyone, Stacy?
Yeah, I would just like to say. Hello? I would just like to say that I really do like the fact that the decompression of the classified salary scale is going to be on this budget for a long time. They've needed this. And hopefully, the county commissioners will see this and give us what we need.
Well, having worked closely with Mr. Hensley and Mr. Cox on our finance committee, we've agreed very much on this budget and what it includes because we all see the need to keep up with current expenses, but still make progress. We have no desire to let the Moore County schools drop behind or to simply maintain. And I have to agree with Mr. Hensley. We need a funding formula that we can convince the commissioners to adopt. And I know we talked to this last year, and we presented it last year, and we didn't get very far with it. But it doesn't mean it needs to go away. And I think that's something we really need to continue to push a little bit there. We also picked up on Mr. Levy's suggestion last year about the increase in the digital, what's it called, the digital fund? Digital learning fund and the capital fund, because it hadn't been changed in years. And obviously, a computer is no cheaper today than it was five years ago. So that increase in the digital fund and in capital maintenance would be critical for us and would be something that, based on Mr. Hensley's formula of a standard increase that we know we could count on, would be there. And so I really do feel like that's something we're just going to have to continue to work on to make sure the commissioners really know that we've thoroughly investigated this. And it would enable us, and when I say us, I mean our superintendent and our finance officer, to present a budget each year to us that they actually know is based upon the funding that's going to come. And so I think that the suggestions you've made there have been so good, and that might be the way we need to go.
Thank you.
Like I said, we agree.
Thank you, Ms. Carter.
Thank you, everyone. And I too, let me end by saying that I too agree with our line items that we have in our budget request. And I will reemphasize again, as everyone has, with our classified staff. At $1,196, I believe, was our number, Andrew, to where they started from. Some of them, $1,196. And we know the state automatically increased up to $15 an hour and didn't fully fund that. But just getting our classified staff to where they need to be, it's been years in the making. So that item, we definitely all agree on. Also, with establishing our Connect Academy, we've heard from parents that they still have a need, some of them, to keep their children at home. And being able to offer that standalone school to those 500 and something students, or whatever that number gets to be in the fall, is just added bonus for us, I think. It could win in some of our homeschool students whose parents see this as an opportunity for them, possibly. Also, with the added dollars for reducing our class sizes. We've heard over the years from parents directly that increasing those class sizes in fourth and fifth grade caused some of them. that increasing those class sizes in fourth and fifth grade caused some of them to take their children out and put them in private schools, charter schools. So trying to get back to a better ratio for students and teachers in fourth and fifth grade is needed. So at this time, with no further comments, I would like to, did you have any additional comments, Dr. Locklear?
No, ma'am, ma'am chair.
At this time, I would like to ask if there is a motion to proceed with finalizing and approving our budget as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there any of that opposed? All carry seven to zero. Yay. Thank you, thank you, board members. It's been a lot of work, definitely, to get to this point of trying to get a concise budget. Next, we will hear about our Connect Academy as a standalone school. Dr. Locklear?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, board members. Dr. Metcalf is back with the team this evening around the recommendation for the Connect Academy to be the standalone school going into next school year. Dr. Metcalf and team presented a thorough presentation around that background, what we had been doing in the past, what we were accelerated and pushed to do during the COVID pandemic, and then what that program would look like moving forward and some budget information behind that. So I believe Dr. Metcalf and team are here tonight to answer any additional questions that the board may have. But they did bring a recommendation that would move forward with that, and that is also my recommendation. So Dr. Metcalf, don't know if I left anything out.
No, you did an outstanding job, and so did you, Ms. Thompson. Thank you for sharing about the Connect Virtual Academy. We've been working on this since, I think, 2018. This fire team has been working on this. So we're excited to bring this forward to you, having presented it last Monday with a recommendation to move forward with a standalone virtual school.
And with, we know and we got the presentation, Dr. Metcalf, but high level for our participants in the audience and our public that's viewing us tonight, this evening, high level, what does that look like with regard to a principal and teachers and location? Just that high level of what does that look like, that type school for us?
And I'm going to ask Jeremy Swafford to talk a little bit, to give a high-level report about what the school looks like. Mr. Swafford?
So you're talking about personnel. So right now, we have 527 students in the spring. So we have right around 18 teachers, one EC specialist who works with all of our EC students. We share some EC specialists at the elementary level. And then we also have, at the high school level, doing electives. We have a number of electives that are offered. We have six Moore County school teachers who help cover some of those electives. Plus, we do NCVPS classes that also cover all of our AP classes. As you can imagine, we offer a full range of every kind of elective AP class that you would see in person. The only classes that would not be offered would be classes that don't transition well to the online environment. Automotive, cooking, because you're not, it's hard to do that when you're on a computer. But we can offer just about everything you can think of online. You have live classes that are going on. In person, not in person, but virtually, teachers are meeting, elementary school teachers start at eight o'clock. They meet whole group, they meet small group. With our middle school teachers, they start at nine o'clock and they have four blocks of classes, ELA, math, social studies, and science. In high school, they have general support sessions for all students that they meet live with these students and they go back and forth with discussions. And they also have individual class discussions. So you can imagine it's very similar to what you see in person.
Thank you. And we know that if this is approved tonight, then there will be online information with regard to dates and sign-up times and those type things.
If the board is able to approve this tonight, we will begin our registration for the 2223 school year tomorrow at noon. It will be available onsite. We'll start a marketing campaign, a choices campaign, reach out to all the families who are currently involved. And I'll try to get that message out through social media, through the campaign, to our community at large that we are open for business with the Virtual Academy. Our initial registration period would begin tomorrow at noon and would end at May 31st. That's just the initial surge. We hope to get 500 or 600 students. Right now, as Mr. Swafford said, we had 527 who are participating. And as you saw on Monday, the survey data indicates that the community is very interested in us continuing that program.
Board members, any comments, concerns? Mr. Levy?
Yeah. One of the things that I'm hoping that you will also, that you will also get out to the community is I understand your school will be responsible for Blend Ed, correct?
Yes.
And the key to me to Blend Ed is that while it's important to have this new school, extremely important, because when you say 500, 600 kids, you're really talking about a school, I'm correct, correct me if I'm wrong, about the size of Northmore, about the same size as Northmore. So it's not, well, it's a small school. It's not a very tiny school. But fully 10% of all the eligible students in Moore County, as I understand your surveys, do some form of homeschooling. And I don't know if all those parents can do quadratic equations. But it would sure be nice if we can help them, let them do their homeschooling. And that's what Blend Ed is all about, is to help them do their, let them do their homeschooling, but also give them the expertise that only trained teachers can give, especially in the maths and the sciences. So I would, I fully support your, this new, this new standalone school. But I hope in your outreach to the community, you will make a specific outreach to our homeschoolers and tell them that they can not only homeschool, but they can be comfortable also using the services for which they pay good tax money for, the services of Moore County schools.
Absolutely. Thank you for pointing that out and sending that message about Blend Ed as well. Of course, the principal of the Connect Academy will also be charged with running and coordinating and working through our Blend Ed program. If the board approves this, we will continue to have three choices in Moore County schools. A little large there, if you can shut that. Thank you. We'd have the traditional school for those students who like being on campus and like that face-to-face interaction. We have the fully virtual school, which we're trying to get approved tonight or recommending for approval tonight. And then the continuation of the Blend Ed, which is what you're speaking of, which is for, really developed for homeschool families with the idea that they would work both at home and take classes at school as well and support that homeschool environment. So three different options, three different choices for our families at Moore County.
Thank you.
One question. Something I didn't think to ask when we talked about this last week. A homeschool family in Blend Ed is assigned a domicile, a school of domicile or?
They would, they would. The elementary program is right now coordinated out of McDees Creek Elementary School. Two days a week there at school, a couple of days a week there at home, three days there at home. At the middle and high school, it looks a little bit different. And they would be halftime at their domicile school. So they live, for example, in the Pinecrest High School area. They would attend Pinecrest High School for half the day or two periods, which allows them to participate in athletics at Pinecrest.
Well, that was my next question. So if they can go into Blend Ed, they then can still play football at Pinecrest?
They can.
If that's what they desire.
Well, let me expand that a little bit. If a student participates in Blend Ed, then they can participate in any of the extracurricular activities in their, the school that is in there, that they're in the attendance zone, correct?
That's absolutely true, as long as the activity isn't connected to a particular class, for example. But yes, you could participate in the musical, you could participate in the prom, you could participate on the football team.
Or the chess club, or the debate club.
Or the debate club.
As a team, as a team.
Any other, Mr. Holmes?
My question was related to the athletics. I was writing it down and I heard, and I'm sorry I interrupted.
Okay. Mr. Hensley?
Yeah, I just want to, you know, as you all know, initially, when this came up last year, I objected to it. And my objections were very specific. One is, I wasn't sure how it fit in our strategic plan. It just seemed to come out of right field, but that was probably because I was the new person, right? But my objections were really twofold. One is, I hadn't felt that you guys had made the business case, you know, the budgeting and the forecast and all that. And secondly, I was concerned about the effects on teachers. And I'll explain why I was concerned about the effects on teachers. If you can have teachers teaching remotely, then they could teach remotely from the ed center. They could teach remotely from their house. They could teach remotely from Scotland County. They could teach remotely from Mississippi, or they could teach remotely from India. So at that time, I voiced concern that, like so many other first blue collar, now white collar jobs are being outsourced to other places and countries. So I expressed concern of that. So those were really my two objections. So I now support it, and I'll tell you why. One is, it offers choice. And, you know, as you said, Blend Ed, in-person, virtual, people want choices, we should offer choices. Secondly, Dr. Locklear, you know, the team put together their pencils and whether they had it and just didn't present it or whatever, you guys made the business case. You looked at forecast projections, you looked at revenue, you looked at where the funding was coming from, and you looked at all of that stuff to make the business case. Thirdly, although I didn't say anything in yesterday, in last week's meeting, it was pointed out that everyone who teaches in this has to have the same certifications as they would if they were in-person. So that protects against the outsourcing of jobs. But I would say that you could hire people from out of county and we need to guard against that. I mean, I don't know the rules and regulations. I just don't want our teaching positions outsourced to another county, another state, or another country. And then finally, just, you know, one word of caution. It was mentioned last week that I think nine of the teacher positions are currently being paid with ESER funds. So, you know, there's going to be a decision coming down the road, you know, I mean, we'll see. You know, we'll see what the county commissioners do. We'll, you know, we'll make it work. We'll see what our strategic plan is. But it's precariously balanced on ESER funds as we stand here now. So anyway, I support it and good work.
Dr. Metcalf, remind us again with the Connect Ed or Blend Ed, anyone? Are we, where do we fall with other districts? Are there other districts within the state who offers this, the same opportunity?
Currently, there are 62 districts that are offering virtual schools. The height, before the pandemic, there were just five. So that 62, I think, is strongly a result of the pandemic. How many will be able to continue? The state has very specific regulations on whether you can continue with it post-pandemic. We were lucky enough to be on the front end of that, and so we're in a position where we can, you know, bring this forward. Within our region, I think there are two districts that we are aware of that will have virtual schools, but they're K-8. They're not focused on the high school.
Okay, all right. Any other comments, questions? At this time, Dr. Locklear?
No, ma'am.
Okay. At this time, our.
I have a comment. Mr. Barath, can we turn the air off?
Thank you, Mr. Holmes.
That's the easiest question I've answered all night.
At this time, our interim superintendent has recommended that our school board consider approval and endorsement of our Connect Academy as a standalone school for 2022 through 2023 school year. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there any that opposed? Vote carries seven to zero.
What was that, seven to zero?
Seven to zero.
Seven to zero.
Yay. Are we, board members, do we keep on moving? Does anyone need to take a break?
No, we got the air off.
Okay. Next is final upset bid for the Old Aberdeen Primary School. Dr. Locklear?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, Mr. Barath is here to, again, bring forward this recommendation that we have that the board accept, the purchase contract for the Old Aberdeen Primary property. As we know, there was an upset bid process that went on, and we have a contract for sale with Drain the Swamp LLC. You also will note on your agenda is a resolution noting the board's intent to sell the property. And that's, that allows us to move forward in that 30-day closing period and to move forward with that in a brisk way if the board approves it tonight. It does come with my recommendation that you accept this. And it also comes with my recommendation on that motion that we also move forward for any bidders who lost or withdrew, that we also return any deposits or any, anything we need to return to those folks. So with that, Mr. Barath can answer additional questions if the board has them.
Comments, questions? Is there a motion to?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I read over the contract for this particular piece of property, and I noticed that we have no protection in there against someone buying the property and turning around and selling it like we did in the other sales we had for the other three buildings we sold. So, and I think a lot of people recommended with what's going on in 211, that property may go up in price. So I move that we table this item until we've had a chance to include that information in our contract with the buyer.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Hensley?
Well, let me make sure I, because I was writing something down. So we modified the mo, so Mr. Dennison just made a motion to table it, and then it was seconded, is that correct? So let me say this. Good thing I was paying attention. There's a difference between this one and the other three. The other three were, in your parlance, they were short sells. The other three were sold under certain conditions. You know, Southern Pines Primary was sold to the Southern Pines Land Trust, Southern Pine via private sell. Southern Pines Elementary was sold to a charter school via private sell. And we sold Aberdeen Elementary to the Town of Aberdeen through a private sell, right? So those three, it was reasonable and had, let me state this. It was reasonable to say, look, we don't want you to flip this, whether, you know, you were any of the entities that bought it. You know, whether you're the Town of Aberdeen, or the Southern Pines Land Trust, or the Montessori School. You know, our expectation was that they wouldn't flip it. This is a full and open competition. I don't know why you would do that same sort of restriction on a full and open competition. I mean, if the person wants to sell it next week, you know, a week after it closes, I'm not sure we have an interest in that because it went to the highest bidder instead of a private sell. So my only point is the circumstances are different from this one from the other three.
Mr. Dennison?
My comment is, Southern Pines, we sold for the appraised value. Land Trust, we sold for the appraised value. I'm not sure about Aberdeen. This property is over $200,000 less than the appraised value. And I think we need to use the same standard. If we're interested in money, we should have this in here, whether or not somebody uses it. But with what David indicates is going on in that area and with 211, chances are that the price is not going to go down. And even if my proposal would be in the property, that if they pay $400,000 for the total amount of property and they sell any of it, take the percentage they sell and see what percentage that is of $400,000, and we get 50% of anything over what they got that, you know, they didn't pay for.
Mr. Levy?
This is, this kind of comes out of left field to me because this is a competitive bid. It's a private sale. We could have gotten, in my opinion, much, much, much more money for Montessori, for the Southern Pines School. No question about that. For Aberdeen Elementary, probably. But we also did it without competitive bid, so we just don't know. And for Southern Pines Primary, we did it, against my better judgment, almost as a public service. And we didn't want, we wanted to make sure that those three entities, which were buying them for a semi-public purpose, and we were foregoing competitive bids, that we got the public service for the people of Moore County that was bargained for. Because part of, part of what we bargained for was the price, part of what we bargained for was the public service. And that's the reason why we didn't do it for competitive bid. This is an open bid like buying a house. I would also. I I would also ask counsel, is there in this state a some problem of covenant against alienation? Is there a problem there?
Are you asking if there would be an issue with adding a provision in this contract to that effect? To prevent resale? That's something I would need to research further. I do know in some of the situations, like with the Southern Prime, Southern Pines property, that there were historical designations at play which might have factored into the the inclusion of a provision to that effect in that particular document. And I think here, this is something the board wanted us to explore. We could certainly do that.
That would be another reason that we needed to delay.
Let me, let me, let me also, let me also say, forever and a day, I wanted these schools to be set aside for future expansion. Okay? The board was different, okay? Now we take the the school that is the least desirable, and we get a full, we're, we're ready to close in fifteen days, cash offer, okay? And 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 we have, apparently, can I talk about that other bid? Counsel, can I talk about that other bid?
I'm not sure it's relevant.
Well, all 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 I'm saying, we have a willing, we have a willing bidder, okay? And we have willing money. And I just don't see playing around with this one. You know, let's get the money in the bank, and let's go ahead and repair our schools, use it for what we promised the county commissioners that we would use it for.
This doesn't mean we still couldn't get four hundred thousand dollars by putting the clause in. Just have to negotiate with the buyer.
I I don't know.
We're not asking for more money.
Any other comments?
I was just trying to wrap my head around it, too. I see where you're going at. I I think this certain buyer is more than likely not going to do anything educational. He's more than likely going to just put houses, just by knowing who this person is. So he would probably sell some of the property, is what I'm thinking. Because that's, you know, what his business is. So either we need to either, to me, ask for more, if that's your concern.
No, 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 no. No, not same amount, but have that clause in there if it's sold.
But he could sell it to like six other people. That's, I mean, it could get really, I think it could get very dicey.
I think you're exactly correct.
Well, I I stated the way I feel about it, and I feel
I mean, I get what you're saying. I understand what you're saying. I'm just, and maybe we just table it to think about it.
Let me say this.
So let me, Mr. Hensley. So so Mr. Dennison, your motion was to table this?
Until we get these other
Until we get all of our questions answered to
Tendency like
To next month.
That Bob asked and
Okay.
And 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 making an exchange to put something in in the contract to protect us if turned around and sold it. Two eleven offered him a hundred thousand dollars for a piece of the property they're doing, you know, that we we benefit from.
Is is anyone?
Mr. Hensley had something.
Yeah, I would just, I would just add, it's really expounding upon what I said earlier. I led the charge on getting the language put in the Southern Pines Elementary School. Because as Bob said, you know, the intent of that was to keep it in public education, although a chart, you know, a charter public school, not a traditional public, public school. And we were selling it for what the true market value was. And although we got above the appraised, I mean, I think we all knew with a bulldozer, it would have been worth a lot more, right? So just the property is what I was referring to. So that's why I insisted on that clause so that more Montessori can never financially benefit from selling part of the property. It is because we didn't go through an open bidding process. And again, whether this achieved the the appraised amount or not, it did go, as Mr. Levy pointed out, it did go through a a public bidding process. And the other thing I would point out is that the reason that it didn't make its appraised part is if everyone remembers back, it was appraised for some sort of government program, high density housing that would be subsidized by the government. But it ended up not qualifying that because, you know, it was too far away from essential services.
Any other comments? I I I think I agree with with Stacy. I I'm not so sure that we could include any type of clause or anything in the contract that says that this is an upset bid process. However, if you make two, three hundred thousand dollars or whatever the amount, that we need to get half of it. And I I think with the motion on the floor to just table this until next month so that we can get some research, get questions answered.
Well, that that's why we, you know.
So so if there are no questions, let's take a vote on just tabling this item. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
One, two, three, four. Okay. So four, three. Okay, so is there a motion to approve and accept the upset bid?
So so moved with the clause that we also, I I think we also endorse the resolution, which is attached to our our agenda. And that we also, and counsel, correct me if I'm wrong, that we agree to return any any either unsuccessful or withdrawn bids. Is that sufficient, counsel?
Bid deposits.
Deposits, excuse me, deposits, yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments, questions? All in favor of the motion? Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries five to two. Next.
That's different.
Next, we have design services.
Madam Chair, I request a short recess.
Okay, let's take a five-minute, ten-minute, ten-minute break. We'll call our meeting back to order. Thank you. Our next item is design services agreement for the modernization of school gyms. And we had Mr. Barath And we had Mr. Barath along with Ms. Caldwell and Mr. Hensley who followed up for us. And I don't know, Dr. Locklear, how they they may want to be involved in in the follow up and sharing the information. I don't know, but I'll let you say what you need to, and then we'll start.
Well, yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, I'd like to defer first perhaps to Mr. Hensley and Ms. Caldwell. See if there's any comments they'd like to make, and then and then John and I can take it from there, if that's okay with them.
We have a committee report, if that's okay. First of all, I am professionally jealous of Mr. Barath's purple jacket. I was looking for something purple today, and I just couldn't couldn't do it, didn't have it. So anyway, as alluded to, Stacy and myself, you know, we were, I was lured onto the board with on this committee with Stacy. And I have a committee report. So we gathered together last week, and the original members of the committee were there. I thank everyone for participating. What we did is we went through the RF, we went through the request for proposal and the process to make sure to satisfy ourselves that it complied with the North Carolina general statutes and our Moore County School policies. And I'm proud to report that it did. When we were reviewing the the request for proposal, when we got in the evaluation criteria, there were some evaluation criteria that that we might recommend doing different next time. For example, we would like to see maybe if it's legal weight put on using local vendors, you know, so that we, you know, our tax dollars support local vendors. And secondly, the other thing that I identified was forty-five percent of the weight was on previous experience with Moore County Schools. And look, past performance is very, very important, especially for any service or construction project. But but, you know, if you if you limit that past performance evaluation only to past performance with Moore County Schools, then it becomes a self-licking ice cream cone, and you really don't open it up to a broader. I know this wasn't the intention, but the effect could be that you don't open it up to a broader pool, because there might be a newer up and coming company, or someone who knew it better, cheaper, or all of the above. So I would recommend that in the future, maybe we take a look at the evaluation criteria, and if within the law, tweak them a little bit. Which brings me to my next point is Mr. Barath, while we were meeting, John mentioned that in the past there had been board representation to the to the architecture, or whatever it's called, construction committee. And we would recommend that 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 resume. And I think Mr. Barath would appreciate us there. That way, they get the intent of the board and board participation. Then we can come back and report, you know, as well. So so the out of abundant, as mentioned in the summary, out of an abundance of caution, and only because there had been accusations from the public in the past, Mr. Barath recused himself from the from the voting. And I wanted to say a word about Mr. Barath for a minute, by the way. And I told this to Ms. Caldwell. I had been very critical on the amount that we spent, that Moore County spent on the the previous three schools that we built. However, that being said, you know, whether you built three schools or five schools, or they were gold-plated, or nickel-plated, or, you know, covered in dirt, or somewhere in between, that is a, you know, that's a, that's a decision the board made. What I want to say is that the project management of those was absolutely superb. Regardless of the amount that we spent, you know, Mr. Barath, he give his reports, he stayed on top of the contractors, you know, he did it. He made sure everything was done, he made progress payments, he he looked out for our interest. If a vendor didn't perform, then he didn't pay him, and that's what he should have done. So Mr. Barath has done an outstanding job of managing projects in Moore County Schools. So anyway, so anyway, we reviewed it, we went through, I read all the proposals, and the results were the same. And Ms. Caldwell and myself recommend that the board approve the the results, and that we move forward.
Yeah, I I did everything that David just said. I also wanted to say, too, that John didn't have to excuse himself. There's no reason for him to excuse himself.
Right.
He requested that so there wouldn't be any kind of social media outburst of something going under the table, which we know is not. So you have our our very most trust in everything that you do. You've been here for a very long time, and you've proved yourself over and over and over again, only to get slandered by some people on the in social media. So and you're still rising to the top. So I appreciate you. I want you to know the board appreciates you, and thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Thank you, John.
Just to clarify, Mr. Hensley's comment, he was referring to what used to be the facilities committee.
Right.
I think that's the term he was looking for.
Yeah.
And so that would be also something we talked about for a brief period as welcomed, and it'd be good for the board to have a regular update regarding all facility-related issues.
Thank you. Did you have any comments, John?
Uh, no, other than superintendent's final comments.
Okay. I I would, any other board member comments?
I am, Pam. I was gonna, I was gonna make comments debunking everything that comments that were made at the last board meeting, but I'll dispense with all that, but ninety-nine percent of it was false. But I did have a comment I was gonna read. I said, I have known John Barath since twenty, November twenty fourteen, and I have complete confidence in his ability to do his job, and I have absolutely no concerns about his integrity in doing his job. But I said, for some reason, there are people who criticize Moore County School employees, especially on the radio and during public comment at board meetings, with absolutely no evidence, no evidence that any or all of their accusations have any merit. And I just wanted to emphasize that. Thank you.
Any other comments? I too appreciate you, John. You've always been just top-notch. And going back and actually looking at our list of construction projects that we've had over the last twenty years or so. There is just an ongoing list of work that has been done here in Moore County by SFL and A Company, who came under question at our last meeting. I remember clearly that back in, I think it was two thousand and six possibly, whenever we did the fifty-four, fifty-five million dollar bond, and we got additions to Robbins Elementary. We got additions to Westmore, we got additions to High Falls, and some of those were key projects. So thank you, thank you, Stacy and David, for your time to take off and go be a part of the committee. John, thank you and your committee. And at this time, is there a motion to receive the superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh-oh. Jason, are you wait?
Just a quick clarifying question with regards to references to the committee. Those are references to the the committee made up of staff only, correct? And then and then Mr. Hensley and Ms. Caldwell met with, met with the committee, but were not, were not members of the committee. Is that, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so the recommendation for this particular award came from the committee of-
Came from the superintendent.
Internal staff, like by Mr. Barath.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, okay.
They don't have to-
Just for clarification, we- So therefore, it requires a motion and a second.
But but we did have committees prior to the pandemic.
Yeah.
We did have board members.
But the references to this committee are references to a committee made up of-
They don't have to recuse themselves. Is that what you're getting to, to vote?
No.
Stacy, or, go ahead, Mr. Weber.
You've answered my questions.
Well, let me, let me, let me clarify this. So so although I said a committee report, I don't know that we were officially a committee, but we were, we we attended the meetings, we were non-voting members, and-
You and I, you and I are a committee.
Stacy and I attended the meeting, and we were a non-voting member, and we observed and-
Yeah.
And asked questions, but not members of the committee. That would have open meetings implications, but but you went and asked questions of the committee.
Right.
And the recommendations coming from the committee made up of staff to the board.
And and Dr. Locklear.
We're endorsing, Stacy and I are endorsing their their recommendation.
No, ma'am, I was just gonna restate my recommend, my my recommendation and my motion to approve these projects, and we're excited to move forward upon board approval.
Now, where did we get to?
And that's what, we've already made that motion and seconded.
And we seconded. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Next is an item of professional membership organization.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
At this point, I'm gonna withdraw. That was my item. I'm gonna withdraw it at this time. I may bring it up later, but I think it needs some further study. So we'll we'll dispense with it. Thank you very much.
Okay. We don't have to have a motion or anything, is that correct? We just withdraw?
Oh, just withdraw, yes.
Okay, all right, okay. Next, we have an item, and board members, I apologize for confusing everyone, of this item, defense of claims. And so I would just like to begin with a little bit of background on behalf of of our board. In late November, a lawsuit was filed against three board members, Caldwell, Dennison, and Carter, by Beth Ann Pratt and James Moore. The board has a liability coverage agreement with the North Carolina School Board's trusts that provides legal service when a board member or an employee is sued, and the trust determines there is a need for legal coverage. The board paid the five thousand dollar deductible, as required by the liability coverage agreement, and the trust pays for the rest of the defense for the three board members. Regardless of the number of board members involved, it doesn't matter. There is a one-time five thousand dollar deductible, and the trust will pay for the rest of the defense. On December the thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, the board went into closed session for attorney-client privilege consultation, including a discussion of the aforementioned lawsuit. I am authorized, and I am reporting this evening, that as part of that discussion, the board made decisions related to the handling of the claims against the board members specified in the suit. Specifically, at the session, there was a six to one vote to cover the legal defense cause for each board member named as a defendant. We had a board member, Mr. Hensley, who raised a concern about whether or not the the vote should have occurred in open session. Our attorneys have followed up, and they have researched this issue and provided guidance on this question. They have determined that while some of the discussion was valid and was appropriate for closed session, that there is no case law directly on point, and there is a fair argument that the actual vote in this matter should have possibly occurred in open session. To address this concern, and certainly to be transparent, I would like to entertain a motion at this time to ratify the board's December the thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, closed-session vote to cover defense cause for board members Caldwell, Carter, and Dennison in the lawsuit caption Pratt versus Caldwell in the middle district, in middle district of court of North Carolina, case number one twenty-one dash C V dash ten. Is there a mo, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
The motion has been made and has seconded to ratify the board's thirteen, twenty twenty-one, closed-session vote to cover legal defense for board members Caldwell, Carter, and Dennison in the lawsuit, as aforementioned. And to be clear again, I I just want, I want it to be clear that this is a one-time cause for all said board members within this lawsuit. The trust will cover all remaining legal fees. Any questions that can be discussed at this time in open session that we don't have to break and go back into closed session?
I just have one quick comment. It is absolutely, it is absolutely one hundred percent the responsibility of an organization to indemnify its employees against lawsuits, whether those employees be a teacher who is sued for something that occurred in the classroom, or a coach where the player get injured, or a member of the Board of Education. It is act, it is absolutely the responsibility of an organization, whether it's a private company or or a public organization like Moore County Schools, to to provide that indemnification.
Thank you, Mr. Hensley.
Just one further clarification, because I'm not so sure this came out, and counsel, correct me if I'm wrong. There are four entities being sued, the individuals plus the board, okay? If only the board was sued, it would be the same amount of money. So we are not expending any additional amounts of money for the other people being sued, correct?
That's correct. The lawsuit was against board members in their official capacity, which is similar to a lawsuit against the board.
Right. So I just want to make sure that it doesn't look like we're spending money on individuals, that we're spending money actually on the board. And 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 the bulk of that, the bulk of the rest of that is obviously taken care of by by our indemnity, I don't want to say indemnity, our 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 company that takes care of such things.
And and I had a couple, are you finished, Mr. Levy?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I had just a couple of questions, Mr. Weber. Did the board's prior votes require any additional expenditure or funds?
No, and I believe that's the point Mr. Levy was just making, which is-
Okay, I just, yeah.
The coverage agreement with the trust requires the payment of one deductible, and that amount is paid one time, no matter how many employees are sued, no matter how many board members or the board, it's one deductible amount.
And so if the board had voted no, if the board had voted no, would would there have been any money saved, because the whole board was sued, right? And so so what would happen in that case?
I mean, it would be similar. So the 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 trust agreement requires the payment of one deductible.
I I just, I just want to make it clear, and and again, certainly, we are striving to be very transparent. And so I just want to make it clear for board members, as well as our public, that that we we only have a one-time fee, it's not individual, it's not fifteen thousand dollars. I think I I heard that each board member, we had to pay five thousand dollars each. So I just want to make that clear, so that so everyone is aware of that. Any other comments? Otherwise, at this time, all in favor of approving to proceed with the trust and and the funds to for our board and our members, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. And I also want to note, just so, again, being transparent, the vote at our actual closed session was six to one, so now it's seven to zero. So thank you, board members, for helping helping me to clarify that. Next, we will proceed with our last couple of items, which is interim superintendent's report.
No further, no further items to discuss tonight, or share. Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay. Next is our board comments, and we'll start with Mr. Hensley.
Madam Chair, I have no comments.
I'm all.
That's not the first time I've never had closing comments. I always have, just for the record, I always have comments on agenda items.
Nine was, I better call nine-one-one. Ms. Caldwell.
Well, the real question's gonna be if Mr. Levy has any, but-
We're gonna get them.
But I don't have any.
Have to find out.
Mr. Dennison? Mr. Holmes?
No.
Mr. Levy?
Come on, man.
I'm I'm just too upset about Carolina's loss, that so I, so I can't really say anything. So I I I wish everybody a very, very good evening, and I'm- And I might also say, it's one of the earliest we have ever adjourned.
We're not out of here yet.
Ms. Carter?
I do want to make one comment, and that is simply to offer my compliments to the Pinecrest Playmakers for their incredible performance this weekend. I know quite a few of us got there. And, and just to note that there will be performances coming up, and I don't have the dates in front of me, but at both Union Pines and Northmore. And quite a few of our elementary and middle schools have performances already on the calendar as well. So it's a delight to be able to get back out and see these children actually perform. So it was exceptional.
You stole my comments. The play was simply, simply just awesome. Please go on our calendar site and, and look up Union Pines, Northmore, and as Libby said, our, our middle schools. Those students are just simply amazing. The way that they sing, perform, all of it, from start to finish. And a big shout-out to Mr. Fall and his team, who I'm sure countless hours goes into getting the production finalized and up and going. So kudos and a huge shout-out to, to Mr. Fall and everybody that supports him. At this time, Mr. Dennison.
No ma'am, I think we need to go to closed session.
Okay, that's right, I'm sorry, Keith, thank you. At this time, we will recess to closed session again, and we will only come out to close our meeting. So those of you in attendance, if you want to leave, and you don't have to wait, we will have no further business.